The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning that the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the town hall and available for everyone to review.
All right, so members in attendance tonight, we have Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Jessica Vanort, Rich Hewlett, and welcoming Tom Collard.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And Tom, just so everybody is aware, Tom got together with Deb Hawkins, our town clerk, and took his oath of office and is ready to serve on the board through the duration of the term that ends at our next town meeting, which is in March of 2025. I'm Kristin Powers, and I have everybody here who signed in in person and everybody who's online. Mike is our chairman, so any questions or comments are directed to Mike. For additions, we have a few for the agenda tonight. So, under older unfinished business, we wanted to revisit the topic of cameras. We had talked about it a while back, about the idea of installing cameras on the town hall and maybe over like the wastewater treatment facility to assist the highway department in viewing weather on different sides of town, different times of day, to be able to help them to make plowing plans. And so I wanted to revisit that under older unfinished business. Also to discuss the sale of the town truck under the highway department, the road foreman's report. We could remove, once again, the plowing plan. We still have not solidified that with the individual, but basically just to sum that up so that it's not, like, you know, people aren't asking questions about it. There's an individual in town who's interested in perhaps not having the town plow their road anymore, so we've been trying to get in touch with them and learn a little bit more about why that is. So, no new business, or no new information on that tonight. And then executive session to discuss labor relations agreements with employees is the other side. Does anybody else have anything to add or delete? So, the minutes that need approval are from our last meeting, which was October 15th of 2024, and there's one edit to Bob Morleano's pre-requested appearance from the last meeting. He just confirmed a little bit, or clarified what he had said at our last meeting.
I'll move to approve those minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Our way down to zoning administrators' report. Are no, any announcements?
Just to welcome Tom Collard. It's my only.
Thank you for joining us, Tom.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity.
So zoning administrators' report, there's 20 permits year-to-date in 2024. The short-term rental registration packets were sent out to 15 property owners last week, and Nancy attended the VLCT Planning and Zoning Seminar on October 17th. Of particular interest was the legislative update where they reviewed Act 47, statute 13, adoption of bylaws, which removes the rural-town provision. Rural towns can no longer vote to adopt municipal bylaws by Australian ballot unless forwarded by the select board. The legislative voters retain the ability to petition for a popular vote following the legislative body action. So that's an update that Nancy learned, which she thought would be of interest. So that's all from the zoning office.
Okay. That's it, from the planning, uh, from the zoning planning commission?
Planning Commission. We did meet last night. I haven't had the chance to write up a written report yet, but I'll just give a quick verbal one. Our main event last night was that we had a couple people come to the planning commission to present about the window dressers group, and we had a few members of the community, Sue was there also to hear about it. What they are is a mostly volunteer organization that works together to make insets, like insulation, insulating insets that go inside a window. So it's like where you, people will get that film, and you'll tape the film on your window, and you'll do the hairdryer and stuff. This is like a slightly more durable version of that, and it slides inside the window when you need it, and it slides out when you don't. And they have been doing, in Vermont, a lot of work. They have a couple groups down near Manchester that have been doing those, and they were talking about how it might be worthwhile next year for some of the folks in the Paulette, Wells, Fairhaven area to get together and get a volunteer group together to do these, because they can save, what did they say? Per window inset, you could save like eight gallons of fuel oil over the entire winter. And people will get eight or 10 of these. And I was like, I need these next year. So anyhow, we had a good presentation from them, and, and so the planning commission heard about that, and anybody in the planning commission or otherwise who wants to be involved with that going forward would be happy to do so.
Frank?
I'm interested, we had a Merck building, they had a Merck building down in Manchester, and they bid, and they came through with engineering, what they needed storm windows cost, and was it $93,000 or something?
Something like that.
And they, this will work the same as that, apparently, from an efficiency perspective, and it was $2,700, I believe if that's.
Yeah, I think that was it. It's like a storm window that goes on the inside, and the nice part is that, when we, if we end up getting that grant for weatherizing the town hall and the library, these things would be an option, because they can be used in a historic building, because they don't change the outside at all. So it was a really interesting program to hear about.
Nice. Any other questions for the planning commission? Road foreman's report.
So the highway department has continued to check roads and haul winter sand. They've graded Herrick Brook, Towesley Hill, Wait Hill, Rupert Hill, and Chet Clark roads. They sprayed Kelly Hill, Tadmer, and Wait Hill with, is it calcium chloride? And then Damon has coordinated with Haynes Tree Care to proceed with work associated with the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant, so that grant on North Paulette Road. And Tom, just bringing it up to speed on that, we got a grant to help with the safety of that intersection of North Paulette and Route 30. And so part of that is tree removal. So there's some really, really large trees on the, as you're heading out towards Route 30 on the right-hand side, that sort of get in the way of visibility as you come up and around that, that turn in the road. So there's some tree removal that's going to be happening there, but there was a very specific window of time when it could happen, based on state requirements. So, an email just came out today or yesterday, and it's about, part of the other funding that we got for the grant was for signage on that road as well, and there was an email that came out today that talked about how we need to go about obtaining that signage and getting it installed. So I need to spend some time. I did send it to Damon, and we need to spend some time going through that. And information for the town truck for sale has been, I sent it along to Deb, some photos and a post, so I need to follow back up with her. I think that it was posted online to an online marketplace, and it's also out on the side of the road on Route 30 with a for-sale sign, so hopefully we get some fights on that. And that's all I have for the highway department. I don't know if there's anything that I missed?
Just they, they did come put the tires on the grader today, so that's, that's finished.
Okay.
We talked with Johnny Haynes, he's gonna clean the trees up on the bank here that are touching the building.
Okay.
So when he does the project over on the North Paulette Road, he'll come and do this at the same time.
Right. And that's scheduled for in November, let's see, I can tell you exactly when it's scheduled, if you want. 11:11 is when Johnny's scheduled for the North Paulette Road, so somewhere in that timeframe is when this will happen as well.
The grant that Nancy was talking about, is that something we can continue to work on for improvements about the tree?
The tree removal? Yeah, I believe that Nancy's moving forward with applying for it. And that's on town-owned property.
Okay.
So I think that's something if, for, to be thinking about. We, there's a grant opportunity, Tom, that's for tree removal on town-owned property, or I think it's right-of-way as well, right?
Does it say it's for highways too, though?
Yeah.
I did ask that question.
So it is. So anyway, if there's any, any trees that you're aware of that might need to be removed.
There's a lot of them.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, there's a lot.
If there's any specific trees that actually pose a safety concern, something to be thought about, because I believe Nancy's going to go ahead and continue with applying for it.
Anything else for the road? John?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up that, I would like to step aside on the tack board, that's a transportation committee on the Rutherford Regional Planning Commission, and I spoke to Harley, I spoke to Jessica last night about doing that, and I strongly feel that someone on board or the road foreman should be representing the town on the transportation committee. I mean, because there's a lot of information. Tom knows about this, he sat on this for many years prior to me, and if Damian can, you know, spare on Thursday night from 5:30 to probably 6:30, he would get a lot of information. I know that when Mr. Mason Keith was the road foreman, he got a lot of information, you know, I don't know where he got it, but I'm sure he got it from the planning commission in Rutland. And, you know, there's grants, there's help, there is a way to get the district engineer's office to help on some projects, and I strongly feel that Damian should be on some of these meetings, no question about it. I mean, whether it's training, training for the foreman, training for the workers, I mean, it's there. I mean, it's there from the regional commission, and, and that might help retaining, I know you guys have had problems in the past year with people, but this might be an opportunity to get some of these people to stay aboard with the, with the town highway department. Okay? Any questions?
Is that, that meeting something they can attend virtually?
Pardon me?
Is that meeting something they can attend virtually through a computer?
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah. I haven't been to one in person for many, what, two years, Harley?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, Harley is the alternate, but when we talked the other night, he suggested more attendance from someone in the highway department, whether, I know that Bob, okay, and Mr. Hewlett-Rich is involved with the highway department, I guess you represent him on the board, right? Even that would help tremendously, but I think it would be a step forward to do something like that, okay? But in the meantime, I plan on attending maybe one more of the meetings. I'd be glad to sit down with him and go through it, and Harley really is gonna be taking over after me, maybe after a couple meetings, so I think if you can do that, that would be a really, really help to the town highway department and to, you know, the road commission.
Is it a once-a-month meeting?
Once a month.
Once a month.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Harley?
Most of the attendees are road, like Damon's role in their various highway departments in Rutherford County, and that's why it occurred to me. And the most useful part, they're advising on trainings, what trainings are available, but also when grants come down the pike, even a month or two, kind of forewarning. So that seemed to be the usefulness of it.
Thank you.
Mike, can I ask you a question? Chairman Mike?
Yeah, sure.
Is majority of the people attending in person, or are they doing it through?
I think most of them are there on Zoom, okay? Maybe, you know, the camera shows the meeting place in Rutland, and usually there's maybe a half a dozen, but all the rest of them are there on Zoom.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And the other item is that when Dale first came aboard sometime ago, he attended one of the meetings on Zoom with me, and then that was it. So you guys know what happened after that, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Anything else for the road foreman?
I have one thing. So with the, what did we do? The map, the CODI survey?
Surveying of the.
The survey of the town gravel pit. That has fallen. What are we doing with that?
So we're waiting for me to go talk with the landowners on either side of the town-owned road?
Okay. I wasn't sure where we had left that, so I just.
Yeah, so that's, that's plan A.
Okay. Because we had left, the survey is still open.
He didn't make the Mylar map, yeah.
He did not.
Because we're.
Because it's still open.
Because we want to, we need to adjust, in order to do this, pull this project off, we need to adjust that driveway.
Yes.
So there's no sense of making a Mylar map until we.
Right.
And if the landowners, I mean, it's only 10 feet, 10 or 12 feet, right?
Right, okay.
So if the landowners aren't willing to, you know, come to an agreement, whether it be a trade or, you know, purchase or whatever the deal may be, then we'll have, there is a plan B.
Okay.
But I need to.
So that's the next step, the board needs to approach the abutting landowners.
Correct.
I was going through my, the reason I asked is because I was going through my email, and that was in there, and I was trying, today, this afternoon, was trying to go through and make notes of things that I feel like maybe I've dropped the ball on and just not bringing up, so I wanted to bring that up.
We've talked about it a couple of times, and I clearly dropped the ball.
But it was, but it was a while ago, so I just wanted to follow back up on it. So, all right, I'll make note of that.
So if we, if we, if we can own 25 feet, that will make a reasonable driveway in there?
Yeah, as long as we can get, you know, past two vehicles going in.
Right. 25 feet is enough to make a.
That's all we really need.
Okay.
And it's not a right-of-way, we actually.
Right. We would own, we would own it, and so we would have a 25-foot owned access to our own property, so it doesn't, doesn't fall into any of the other qualifying rules that a right-of-way would.
Correct, because it's owned.
And that would make a reasonable driveway easy enough for trucks, and if two trucks needed to pass, they still could pass.
Yeah, we just don't want to build that complex up there and then have to have vehicles back out, you know, meet halfway down the driveway.
Right. So, okay. Anything else under the road foreman? Assessors, anything from the assessors?
No.
Town clerk's memo?
There's no memo from the town clerk tonight.
And the town clerk is absent tonight, okay?
The town clerk's probably very busy getting ready for the election.
Right? Yep, resting up. Okay, perfect. And the town treasurer?
So from Julie, there are two warrants this week. Payroll is $8,697.61. Accounts payable, $176,985.50. General fund, $24,025.92. Highway fund, $160,049.97. Wastewater is $1,607.22, and I'm not sure if there are reappraisal fund monies. It looks like maybe there were some, but it's not on the report or on the memo. The accounts payable warrant includes the payoff of the new truck loan from Berkshire, moving us one step closer to having the lien holder be adjusted to the state of Vermont. So that's submitted by Julie. The two warrants that need to be approved, there was an error in the, the accounts payable warrant number, so it's accounts payable warrant number 25027 for $176,985.50, and payroll warrant 25026 for $8,697.61. All right, I'll move that we approve those two warrants, 25027 and 25026. Those were the correct numbers.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Host, carried. Anything else for the treasurer?
Just a reminder that the budget meeting is coming up in November, so if anybody, any offices have budget requests, make sure to get those in.
Frank?
The notice on if we can't have any public comments, by law you have to, and you have to run the meeting like usual with the whole new state law thing on that.
Frank, that's the way we do it every time. You get to talk at the end of the meeting, not during the meeting.
Explicitly said there would be no public comments, and I was just wanting to say the digital.
Frank, we do it the same way we always have. Emergency management director.
There's no report, but in the email today, there was, the form came through for the regional emergency management committee reappointment form. So Bob Morleano did send that back in, so he has.
He sent it to me, I signed it and sent it back to him, so him and John could get.
Yep, so they're back on there.
That's all taken care of, yep.
But no report.
Anything from Jennifer?
Nope.
Wastewater treatment, I haven't heard anything, so that's good. Facilities? I guess everything's in order?
Yeah, I had just made a note, but Rich already said it, that the tree work would be happening outside of the town hall.
Just put the brush on the side there. One of the other things we're gonna need to be more diligent about, maybe the road crew will be able to do this, is down back where the air conditioner units are, if like once a month or twice a month, they could just go down there and just trim around them so they don't get, get grown up. This summer, when they did a service, they were getting grown up, and it greatly reduces their effectiveness. But we'll try to remember that in the spring. Metairie School, nothing from older unfinished business?
So.
So the letter from the constable, we sent, we sent a question to the VLCT, and we got some answers back from them, and it's not quite as simple as just appointing him. Because we already have constables in our, in our design, we would have to remove those positions before we could appoint someone or hire some, let me, correct me if I'm, if I'm not saying, or if we were to hire someone, they would, they would have to be an independent from a, basically subcontracting to us with their own insurance and liability and stuff like that for, is what our insurance people felt was the safest, safest for the town. So it's certainly not, it's not a dead subject, but it's a subject that we, it requires more than just a motion and stuff at the meeting, so we'll keep working on that to try and come up with, with options and see.
Who did you speak with at the VLCT?
I didn't quite hear that.
Who did we speak to?
Could, do you have an email where we can forward you that chain?
Yeah.
If you would get with Kristin later, and we can forward you that chain, so you can, you can see all the answers to the questions and the questions we asked and stuff, that would, that would make.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then we can, and then we can figure out how we want to work through this that's gonna best benefit the town.
Yeah, because they sent us a sample of a, like, an agreement that a town might enter into with a, with a police agency, basically.
Like a third party, right?
Yeah, like that.
Like a sheriff, you know?
Yeah. And it was because, they said it was because we already had two constables. If we'd only had one constable, we could appoint a special officer, but they said since we already have the two elected constables, we couldn't. So I think it would be helpful for Tom to see the whole exchange, yeah.
And if I may, just to summarize, between our last meeting and tonight, there were several questions that came up. I don't think it was abundantly clear to everybody what the letter entailed. I think there was, people felt like they just weren't, weren't sure, so you can clarify, but essentially, our constables have requested that we appoint or go through the proper processes to bring in a special officer to just assist in law enforcement efforts in town. So in, in addition to the two constables, having somebody else that is already in law enforcement in the area to come in and to support our constables. And part of the intention behind that is to help, because as the constables are elected positions, bringing in somebody that's a member of law enforcement is somebody that's consistently in that world, and so would be able to support with changing laws and.
And has, and already has the appropriate training.
Yeah. Training.
I want to clarify that, too. The last time you asked me what qualifications he had. He's a, he's a level three certification, so he can handle certain cases that I can't handle, that's all. Like murder, aggravated assault, stuff like that that are not in my purview, so that's one of the reasons why I want him on board, so.
Okay. Cameras. Now, did you say that there was somebody local that did those that kind of work?
There must be.
I thought, I thought you told me, maybe I'm talking about somebody else, so.
No, I think I, oh, yeah, I did.
Keela?
Yes.
Don't.
Yes, I did.
Do they have something, did you say?
So I never followed back up. Again, once, it's something that was brought up a while ago, and then we.
And then it went away.
Came and went, and so, but yes, is it Mark Keela, perhaps?
I can't remember.
Uh, but lives locally and does do IT work, and I believe might also, I mean, I don't, I don't want to say more, because I don't actually know what I'm talking about.
But if he, you know, if he has some.
I could certainly reach out.
Other than that, we might, we could probably reach out to countryside lock and alarm. Most of the people, I think, that do alarm systems like that handle surveillance, cameras too.
Yeah.
And they're already, they already have the, the alarm system and, and the sewer treatment plant.
Yeah. And my, from the previous conversations that we've all had, it was less so, because there is already surveillance, especially, you know, here at the town hall, there are cameras around. But it's more so like a webcam, so that the highway department will be able to, it's not so much to look at the building, but more so to look out from the building, so that the highway department would be able to, members of the highway department would be able to log in in the early morning hours or late in the evening, and just check on the roads and see what it's looking like, and it just would help them to make better educated decisions about when they need to get going with plowing.
So you would really be having the correct software and the camera that could do that, so they could log in from remotely?
Yeah. Like the last time we talked about it, I was like, you know, it's at a ski resort when you go on and you see what the conditions are, but then we decided that wasn't a great idea, because then everybody in town would be like, wow, they haven't made it out to plow the road yet. But it could be cool to put that on the website, maybe, but that was the idea. So I'll, I can start by reaching out to Mr. Keela and see if that's something that he might do, and do a little bit more research on that, but.
Is there a camera here that, that shines out on the surface of the road here?
I'm not familiar.
I don't know. I have seen the camera, and I think it primarily looks in front of our door.
Yeah.
Like, it gets that table that's right there, but I don't know if it's pointed out toward, I mean, it might incidentally get a little bit of the road, but it's mostly what, the front door.
Does, does V-trains have any cameras on their roads that, for weather, for the town crew to look at?
That's a good question. They, I know that they have online, I mean, they've got like plow trackers and things like that in the winter, but I'm not sure what they have in terms of actual, I think they, they do have webcams, because I've looked at them before, but I know it's primarily on the main interstates. I don't know if there's any locally on February 30th, for example.
Yeah, I looked at one, like, one over one of the passes up by the ski resorts, but yeah.
Yeah, I've seen those before as well.
If it come up, it'd be nice to see.
But the discussion was. Um, but the discussion was, is there room for ARPA funds? I thought that we had talked about the potential use of ARPA funds for the cameras.
I don't remember if we talked about that or not, but since then, we've pretty much decided where the rest of them were gonna go, 'cause a bunch of them went to those guardrails.
Yes.
We did like, I think, 90K toward that.
Okay.
And then the rest is for the, is for the wastewater, so I'm not sure. I can look at the numbers, but I don't think there was necessarily any left.
Okay.
But I, I wouldn't think that these would cost a whole lot, so maybe there would be.
Okay.
Is there internet at the town?
You can see, that camera will show up.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a, there's a, um, there's internet, and we have a Wi-Fi hotspot there.
So you got that.
Yeah, we got that, and they're.
It's colder from what you're in town, but.
So just, just out of, just for example, I just brought up cameras from work, and you can see the benefit that we could, that we could have.
Yeah, there's similar.
And that, that one there, right now, the, the internet isn't quite good enough to bring it up, but I can expand that and stretch out, so you could see, there, there would be a huge benefit for the.
And you'd just have to point them to where there was a street light, so that they could see what was going on with the road before the light came out.
And often, like in Damon's case, he's down in Dorset, where they'll have four inches of snow down there, and we won't, it won't be dusting here.
Oh, yeah, it'll be totally different.
So then he's getting out of bed, driving out here to see that there's, we're paying him overtime, and.
And quite often, there's a huge difference between my house and here.
Yeah.
So, Frank?
Yeah, what would be good is if something could also. Have road temperature, 'cause that would govern.
Yeah, that's what Bob said, have, have the camera read it and the ambient temperature too, so. I'm sure that once we find the right people, the options will be very available, so. I think that's a great thing. You'll, you'll talk to Keela, and then we'll see if he can assist us, or if we need to move on, or maybe Vinnie might even know somebody that can help us out with that, or et cetera, because I know that the, it doesn't seem to be that complicated to throw those cameras up at work, so.
With the representative, is that the transportation, they could ask other towns too.
Yeah. See what they use.
What they've used, and what they've had good experience or poor experience with. That's why I asked about the audience here, because a lot of that was conversation that was outside the meeting, to learn what other towns were doing.
Okay.
Oh, before we leave, um, unfinished business, I have one update about the, um, about putting up the bench and the bike repair rack at the, the amenities at the West Pollet, um, trailhead. So I'm working with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to, um, to get quotes on the different things that we wanna get. Right now, it's looking like a bench and a picnic table and a bike rack and the bike repair station. So there were two things that I had to bring up to folks here. Um, one was, I wasn't sure what everyone felt about if we get, so we're thinking of getting just a fairly regular picnic table. Would we want it to have an anti-theft device holding it to the ground or not? I was thinking probably.
Probably.
I, I, yeah, unfortunately, I was thinking probably.
Not rambling anymore.
Unfortunately, that would be correct.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll let them know that. Um, the bench wouldn't need it, because the bench they're thinking of getting is a really solid, heavy wood bench that just sits on the ground, um, for the picnic table. The other thing was, um, for certain, the, the bike repair station is going to need to be installed using a small, they need to dig, someone needs to dig a hole and put in a little concrete, and then put the post into it for the bike repair station. And, um, and we were wondering whether we had to put that out to bid, or if we might be able to find someone who wanted to volunteer to do it. So I'm making the announcement right here, if there's anybody who is able to, sometime in November.
A small sonnet, too, basically?
Yeah, yeah, it's just for a poll, basically.
The road crew could probably handle that, probably.
Because I didn't wanna volunteer the road crew for it, but it would be sometime in November.
We, I'll volunteer.
We'll volunteer the road crew. Okay.
First, first we'll tell Damon we wanted to lay up something nice out of Roundstone, Rutland Grumble.
Then we'll be like, oh, just the concrete, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, never mind.
And I did, and I did see that they, I know you said last time, Mike, that they already cut back that brush, and that, that looks so much better, so.
Yeah, it does.
Maybe, I don't know if Damon knows anything about concrete, but we'll figure it out.
Well, I was like, we have to do it in November before the ground freezes, but it won't freeze for a while. I mean, did it even freeze last winter at all, ground? No, yeah.
Not enough to, not enough to cause any inconvenience.
Exactly, so, yep.
Um, one thing that I did see that I just remembered, uh, the West Pollet Treatment Plant.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I thought it was.
They, right, they received two proposals for the upgrade, one from Hole Tanner and one from New England Consulting, and the Rutland Regional Planning Commission endorsed the proposal from Hole Tanner, which was, um, it was, uh, seconded by Jill, she was very happy to hear about that.
Yeah, Jill really wanted to use the Hoyle Tanner.
Yeah, so.
And this, for, for everyone, just to remind you, this is for, um, a grant completely with state money that the Regional Planning Commission got, to help us design a better upgrade for the West Pollet wastewater plant.
Right.
And so they are going to, and they've been taking care of this whole process, working with Jill. So the company Jill wants to work with is the one they're gonna work with, so.
Yeah, someone that she's used to working with through her career and has a lot of confidence in them. So I just remembered that part, and is that it for older unfinished business?
That's it for me.
New business? All good. Public comment? Frank?
Tomorrow night, they're having the second, tomorrow night, on Wednesday night, starting at 5 o'clock, they're having their second meeting. It's a mirror meeting, there are DENO meetings of the Rutland Regional Plan Development for 2026, it's 2026 Plan, and it covers from soup to nuts on everything. And so if anybody wants to go in, they have a remote access to it, or they can attend in person up at the Evelyn Street, the new plant, new Rutland Regional Building upstairs. But that's, um, everybody, roads, ev- everything is covered in that, and every person we talk to who's doing roads or doing railroad, you know, rail trailer or whatever, is, has their own category, and has a section of the plan that they're responsible for. And it's public, this is public comment as well with them, 'cause they're in a phase of developing it, going to, it's Phase Two.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Your turn.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session to discuss labor relations agreements with employees.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Thank you all for coming tonight.